Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. It is Monday, April 22, 2013, at approximately 8:05 PM. Please be advised that this meeting is being video and audio taped. Tonight's meeting, we have one major item of business, which is the continuation of the public hearing for Pine Street Medical Building Site Plan, which will be located at the corner of Pine Street and Valley Street. So with that introduction, perhaps the applicant or representative of the applicant could come forward and just update us on the events of the past week and a half or so since we last met. We'll want to grab a microphone if you would.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Paul Brodmurk. I'm with Site Design Professionals. I was here at the last meeting, which we presented the plan. It went under -- it had been reviewed by -- peer-reviewed by PSC. And we had a number of outstanding items, which we needed to resolve during the interim. I started a few minutes that night after I left here, making those changes, to get them back to you on time. And PSC did just what they said they would do. They turned their end around quickly, too. So it has all worked out pretty well in that regard. We have -- if you've seen your response letter from Tom Houston, we have favorable responses on almost all of those items, as a few outstanding ones, which we probably need to discuss with the board. Unless Dave wants to go through these individually, I don't see there's any real benefit to doing them one at a time. But I think perhaps the most salient feature of those which Tom highlighted is the sidewalk going into the building. We had discussed at the last meeting that we would like to wave the sidewalk along Valley Street, and we provided a sidewalk. Well, first of all, we raised the grade here between the two properties, so they would be equivalent. That eliminated the need for retaining wall between the two properties. So now you can walk through here at grade right onto the next -- the driveway in the next property. Someone in the medical office building who didn't want to take their car for lunch could simply walk along the sidewalk to the sandwich shop here and back. We also allow for sidewalk around the building, and there's one out the exit to Hill Street, to the back side. So we now have that diagonal passage through the property, which negates the need for any sidewalk on Valley Street. But as Tom Houston also pointed out, that didn't address the issue of going straight from the building out to Pine Street, which had been discussed. We don't really see any benefit to go there. We don't think anyone is going in that direction, so we didn't put it in our plans. But ultimately, it's up to you folks to decide where the sidewalks are going to go. We don't see any real -- we don't see people coming down the street and walking into this building. Everyone drives to the medical office building. There's no people walking. So we didn't see any real blatant advantage to doing that, and we left it out. But ultimately, it's up to you folks. So I'd just like to hear what you think of it.
What's the detail where it meets the adjacent property? You said there were some steps there?
Here?
Yep.
I think he got rid of the change in grade.
No, the grades are the same. We're slightly higher, but it's sloped in the sidewalk. There are no steps at all. They've even provided for a wheelchair ramp there.
And what's there where you cross the property line? What's there? Is that asphalt?
Right. That's the driveway right here.
Okay.
Coming in.
Do you want to take the issues one at a time, or do you want to hear all his comments?
Well, Dave, how many items, in your opinion, are still outstanding at this point?
A handful.
A handful. And you concur?
I agree.
About a handful of items, and this is one of them?
This is one of those, yes.
Okay. Maybe we should proceed to the next item that you feel is an item of contention, if you will.
Do you want to go over those that have been highlighted as favorable but in need of revision for the endorsed plans? These are some relatively minor details, but ones that Tom had --
Let's do the contentious ones first.
Contentious ones?
Yeah, once you --
Okay. Let's get it to the meat of it.
Let's focus on the ones that you haven't been able to come to terms with.
Well, I'm looking at item number seven regarding the rooftop mechanical equipment. Greg Pando, the architect, project architect, would like to address that one.
Thank you, Paul. For the record, my name is Greg Pando of Pando Associates Architects in Canton, and I was here at the first hearing. We are in the process of completing working drawings for the actual building. And just as a point of interest, I did some sightline analyses of the actual rooftop equipment from both Pine and Valley Streets. And I'm sorry I didn't -- I thought we'd be discussing this Wednesday night with the Design Review Board, so I didn't bring a whole bunch of copies. But I have one copy here I can circulate, if you'd like to take a look at. What it does, and I'll show Dave first, probably. It shows sightlines at five-foot eye height from both the sidewalk, in front of the building on Pine Street, at approximately 200 feet from the building on the other side of Pine Street at the building, and both on Valley, at this edge of Valley, and across Valley Street. And from both of those locations at eye height, none of the rooftop units are visible. They all fall below the height. The only time I was able to generate a view of a rooftop is 500 feet down the street, assuming that the eye height was the same. I did not take into account that the road did slope down at that point. So that we can do further analysis, but anywhere within the immediate sight, the four rooftop units at six and a half feet tall on the center of the roof are really not visible from anywhere in the general vicinity. So that the need for screening really -- you probably wouldn't even see the screening at that point. So we're looking to see if the board would entertain canceling the visual screening requirement. The units themselves are internally baffled for acoustics, so that they have acoustic jackets on them anyway, and they -- so they meet that requirement of the bylaw. And all the fans on the units point directly up, so that there's no horizontal projection for noise.
So a vehicle driving down Pine Street, particularly coming from the direction of Route 1, which you're coming down, it's a downward slope, I would think you'd see the equipment, the rooftop equipment. Are you saying that that would not be the case, or wouldn't be the case within 500 feet?
Within 500 feet, you wouldn't see the equipment. I can do a further analysis a little further down Pine Street as well, but --
And up Valley as well?
And up Valley as well. But in the -- within 200 feet of this property line in these directions, it's not visible. I can have an analysis ready for Wednesday night, though.
When screening of that nature is done, are there applications where the screening may only be provided on perhaps two or three sides?
Correct.
Perhaps not? Is that typically what's done?
Typically, the screening is done if it presents a visual necessity to screen a certain side. And it may be on one or two sides of the building. In some cases, it's all four, but usually it's on only specific sides where it presents an image. And that is part of the building structure itself.
Maybe you could just explain that a little bit to the board.
Well, what we do is we run -- what happens, you run galvanized steel columns up through the roof in watertight pockets, and those galvanized columns are connected with channels. And then a louvered system is bolted or attached to those columns, because it certainly has to be wind resistant for hurricane force, et cetera, et cetera. And it prevents a visual screen, usually in a neutral color.
Do our bylaws speak to what the radius should be for a visual? No?
No.
Don't know how much of a factor it is, but, you know, we do have at least a conceptual plan for an office building on the other side of Valley Street. So in terms of the visual from that property, maybe something worth considering.
That's the site over here?
Across Valley.
Or in Valley, right there.
Right there.
Yes.
What's the grade that Valley's going to be at?
188, 190 at the street level, and then the base of the prop -- base of the building's at 185.
The office building on that corner, I think, is on a hill. So I'm not sure there's anything we can do to block it. Their building is going to be way above ours.
Yeah, but they'd be seeing a screen versus a mechanical unit.
They might be seeing -- looking down at the roof. I mean, it's considerably higher than the site.
Right, which is also the case coming down 115 north as well, so.
I wouldn't -- we wouldn't be opposed to putting a white louver system on the right and the front side of the building. And the way Greg designed it with the four HVAC units, they're really in the middle of the building. We'd have to be eight or 10 feet away from them. But I wouldn't be opposed to doing it on the right and the front of the building. And then you wouldn't see it from anywhere.
Those are the higher elevations.
That would make sense.
I agree. Any other comments about that specific point? That might, in fact, address that one, so we might be able to cross that one off the Okay, so we're on item three of the so-called handful of items here.
I'm on the third and my final one.
Okay.
If you turn to items number -- on page seven, number 25, 26, those two comments are referencing groundwater test pits being monitored. We did groundwater test pits in this area of the site that were monitored by the Board of Health agent. We also did test pits -- we did those in the morning in February. In the afternoon, we did test pits up through the site area. They were not monitored by the Board of Health. These test pits in this area were very favorable. They're two-minute perk rates. That's as good as it gets. Surprisingly, as we went easterly on the site, it got even better. There was no groundwater at all, and it was all coarse sand. So it is ideal conditions, and although we don't have a test pit directly under the roof recharge system, we've got all sand in the area. We've got no groundwater table. This is -- it doesn't get any better than that in terms of putting it back in the ground. So although they're not monitored, they were not witnessed by the town, the general area, this vicinity, all the work that's been done in here, is a portfolio of soils that have been done, and it's all good soil. It hasn't been inconsistent. So if our test pit is 50 feet off the system, and we've got sandy soils for 1,000 feet around the project site, then I think it's -- I feel pretty comfortable that we know what we're doing, dealing with in terms of the soil conditions.
And in terms of your onsite treatment system, that's in a different part of the site, correct?
Right. We have -- yeah. We have a test pits that were witnessed by the Board of Health in that area. They were witnessed because we started here for the septic system, and then we moved it forward up into here, because we knew we were going to put a detention basin down in that area. So that much of it was witnessed. These up in here were not, but they're better.
Paul, that front blue pond, is that a drainage basin or a septic?
This is drainage. The septic is under the driveway.
Okay, you were pointing to there when you said septic.
Oh, sorry.
All right, that's fine.
Dave, I don't know if you have any comment on that particular item. I mean, the fact that it's not in the area of the septic system, I mean, I think is a consideration.
The soils are fairly uniform and conducive to use.
We seldom get a site like this, where the soils are this favorable. It's not used to this.
So it was mentioned last time on these detention basins that they were kind of higher up in relation to the properties surrounding them, like Rockoplaus or things.
Actually, this, on the down gradient side, this has a three-foot-high berm above the existing terrain, so it's not all that high.
Okay.
It's the parking lot that we had to build up. The reason that comes up is because your catch basins are four feet deep to the -- at their outlet point, and then you've got the network of drainage that's routing it down through into a water quality inlet. By the time you go through all that drainage, those drainage structures, you could be five, six feet above this system with this area in order to make it work through that vertical corridor we have to work in, because we can't submerge the outlet into a basin even during the most serious storm events. So that pushes the driveway up.
Are these going to be pretty much dry all the time? What are they built for?
They're built to be dry within 48 hours. They're dry.
Good. Is it all going to be screened by the plantings, or are you going to have?
Yeah, the screening comes from the plantings, but there's also a security fence around it.
Is it a solid surface or wooden, or?
We're thinking a chain length fence, because it's all behind the screening, I mean, the vegetation here, so you're not going to see it.
What kind of vegetation are you proposing?
Well, this is -- these are white pine. PSC's letter mentioned that perhaps we should alternate between pine and spruce in case one gets diseased, the other won't. And he made a very good point, too, also, as these mature, sometimes white pine lose their lower limbs.
Well, not sometimes. They always.
And then the spruce will fill in.
The other retention basin, though, is there any screening at all? Is that all existing foliage that what's in the dark green now, or is?
This is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is only a foot and a half deep.
But you're putting a fence around it?
We're not --
Oh, you're not?
-- putting those fences, because the water is never more than 12 inches deep there. It's not a hazard.
On your detailed page, what is this white pine old fence? Where's that going?
Yeah, there's enclosure right here on the dumpster.
You have a maintenance drive going off the retention basins?
We're coming up through the back here with a gravel access drive. That gets you on top of the dike, so you can go around and do any maintenance that's necessary.
This is going to be privately maintained?
Oh, yes, yeah.
There was a comment about the landscaping over there, but I don't recall what it is, so maybe we'll have to wait.
It has to do with some ornamental grass.
Which property?
That would be over here where the transformer's located.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Near the street. We proposed ornamental grass around it, only because we didn't want a deep-rooted plant next to the transformer. Those power lines are only two and a half feet deep there, so we didn't want something with a deep root. It's a valid point that the grass is not as effective in the winter, obviously. We could select a different shrub, maybe a PJM rhododendron, something that had a fairly shallow root and held on to its leaves through the winter.
Well, how tall is the transformer?
This tall.
Oh, so PJM will definitely hide that.
What's the total area, I mean, circumference of the transformer? I mean, it's nothing.
Three by three. It's a small.
We should be able to screen that.
The pad's going to be wider. The end style is cuckoo. The pad will probably be 10 by 10.
Have they returned your call yet?
We have. We've only been working on that for a month and a half.
Start now. You might get it turned on by then.
It's not a single shrub, though. I mean, you're coming at it -- you're coming at the transformer from a couple of different directions.
Someone asked about the landscaping that one of the abudders had asked about, and I think they were talking about screening the house behind the building, and we added in those trees along the back of the property.
These trees are new through here. It's not a house, it's a garage.
The garage, right.
Yeah, it's garage.
We added those trees. We also added some trees along the westerly side. We didn't put in along the bottom side, because they interfere with access and maintenance. And from this low line level, you can't see into the detention basin. There's a three-foot berm here, so you'd just be looking at the crust of the berm, that's all.
Yes, and, you know, I'll defer to Design Review to take a closer look at this. We have these basins in every subdivision, everywhere all over this town.
Right.
Five, 10 years into them, they look like hell. You're putting up a beautiful building. There's multiple beautiful buildings all around down there. It's kind of our front door to the town. We're going to be proud of it, as you will be. I'm just concerned about, you know, a lot of these basins become pretty ratty, and I'm just trying to find a way for it to stay looking nice as we drive by.
We talked about this in our own M manual. This needs to be loomed and seeded. Once it grasses in, then all you need to do is mow it a few times a year, and it's fairly easy to maintain. But I'll be the first one to acknowledge, it doesn't happen in subdivisions. They don't get mowed.
We manage a dozen medical buildings, and there's six or seven of them that have these basins, and they're part of our landscape program, spring cleanup, fall, cut down all the excess, et cetera, et cetera. So we maintain them. We always do. It's part of the maintenance on the property. It will be taken care of.
Great.
In subdivisions, you got an association of people that just don't get to it. In a medical building, you have a management company that will take care of it, and so we -- it will be taken care of.
Okay.
The comments, it said something about you addressing tonight the photometrics and lighting on the site.
She's jumping.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Didn't mean to jump.
This is the infamous photometrics plan, and these are all -- this is a grid of light intensity at the ground level. We are in compliance throughout the entire site. This set of lights right here over, they had to push a bit to get it to go out to the perimeter of the property. And that resulted in a lighting at the base of the light, lamp posts of 6.3-foot candles. Five is your maximum, but it's well contained within our parking lot. The other issue is, it's not .25 at the property line.
You do.
This is our property line here. It's .7. And as you go across the street, it's .5, and then it dwindles out into nothing. There's a wooded section out here across the street, and a neighboring house as well. But it seemed to us that, because your -- the next closest street light is down here at the intersection, that all this does is light up the street, which would seem to be a good thing. It's a beneficial overspill of light. And it's -- and it meters out right here at the property lines of the neighbors, so there's no harm done, so it spillage onto the neighboring property.
I'm sorry, did you say you have the other side of the right-of-way shown?
We do.
And so what's the light intensity?
On the further side, it's .5-foot candles.
Further meaning the neighbor's property.
Right.
What's the standard?
A quarter-foot candle.
One quarter?
Yeah, .25.
And, okay, so and it's -- and it's double that, but still half?
Yeah, on the far side, yeah.
If I might just add to that, the street lighting is varies anywhere from three to five-foot candles from streetlights. So this is far below any light that would be associated with lighting the public way.
You might have, like, one of a dozen streetlights near you. People aren't accustomed to them. Where does it peter out to zero? Do you show it going out to zero?
Right here.
Do we have -- do you know where the house is?
It's in here.
Outside of the?
It's outside.
But the design of a light that you've got can be shielded anyway, right?
Yeah, because it's kind of a -- it's a double issue here with they're taller than usual, and then they're spreading farther, so it seems like this -- We don't like to light up our streets in Norfolk. It seems like there's the ability to shield. That it's one -- it amounts to one of your streetlights that goes over onto a private property.
Yes.
Can you change the photometrics on that one, so that it's more to be a cloud?
Add a shield?
We can shield it more. We can add a shield.
You've been so good about everything.
Isn't that the way it's supposed to be?
Yes, yes.
We prefer it that way. Sticking with the optics, there was some reference to signage, and I'm not sure if that's been discussed with the Design Review Board yet. But, you know, we've talked about lighting, and I know there's some reference to the pole heights and such as well. We've talked about screening. Might be a good time to tell us a little bit about the signage.
I brought with me a typical sign which they've used on their last project in Middleboro, and you can see.
Shear.
Yeah, we can shear.
This is typically what they'd be looking at for a professional medical building.
It's supposed to say Pawneville Medical. You have abudders here. Oh, maybe not that sure.
That's the one that's located to the front of the building. And this is one they would like on either the front or the left side of the building.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the other copies.
So that's a -- that shows a building sign that says Pawneville Medical Center, both on the front of the building and on the side of the building. We had a meeting with the doctors earlier today, and we weren't sure whether they wanted it on the side or the front. They both said, they all said they'd like it on both, but I'm not sure we're going to be able to get that. But in either case, we'd have it specifically on the front like that. We haven't fine-tuned it.
Okay.
And it does say Pawneville on it.
What are you anticipating that size might be?
Is that 24 inches?
We're anticipating those are 24-inch-high letters, maximum. Internally illuminated.
And then, so how close are you to your square footage? How wide, how long is it, then? One, two, three, four windows?
Mr. Pando, I think you're going to have a problem with internally illuminated.
All right. Funny you other person jumped on that one.
It's going to be.
Then it won't be internally illuminated.
Bob will have something to say on Wednesday night.
It'll -- a sign compliant in size and to the bylaws of the town of Norfolk.
So what do you think the overall square footage might be estimated? Two-foot-high?
If I could take a look at that, I'll give it to you.
Yeah, good luck with that.
Probably about 100 square feet, since that's the max.
It would be.
About 70?
70 or 80.
70 or 80.
With a building of this scope, that's the reason why we have the flexibility built into the bylaw, so.
Yeah, it should be relevant and in proportion to the building. You don't want this to, you know, teens, teensy.
It is a special permit, though, right?
I understand, but I mean, it's why we designed the bylaw that way.
They haven't applied for the special permit for the sign yet, with the forthcoming.
They'll get by Bob first.
Yeah, it might not be lit.
Yeah, it may not be lit, but the size of the font should be in context, but the proportions of the building.
I, it's just that the variation they're requesting, it, I understand, I understand your reasoning, I just want to get a sense of the variation, he's saying around 80, and we say, you know, you know, 24 square feet by special permit. So I just want to get a sense of the variation. Yeah. Not that I'm suggesting 12 inch high letters.
Do we have to count the little spaces between the letters?
I know.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been an issue, that, there's a, I mean, it came up in the arena.
Oh, absolutely.
There's some flexibility built into that bylaw.
We need the Hubble telescope as we sign for this time.
So, you know, if you're pursuing anything on the side, you may want to, if you're going to try to pursue that at all, you may wanna pursue something which is, something less, whether it's smaller letters, or perhaps not illuminated to the same, and I'm not talking about necessarily backlit, but illuminated from independent lighting or something like that, but, and, and I'm not suggesting that it's something that would be approved, but it, it, it doesn't have to be the same, in terms of what's on the side versus what's on the front, if in fact you're pursuing that at all at this juncture.
They also could take advantage of their corner.
Right, but I also think it's something that, as, as a town, signs have come up quite a bit, and hopefully maybe by town meeting in the fall, we might have an article to, to address that, but in the short term, you have to deal with what we have on the books.
I can also say-
And I didn't mean the corner of the building, I meant the corner of the sign.
In Canton, we have the same problem, the sign portion of our bylaw is like, 8 million pages, and it's, it's the worst, confusing, and, and it's always a problem, we-
Wait a second.
My comments are, I, I, I don't want one of our areas to look like the North Shore, Route 1 North Shore, and that was the purpose of the signed by, bylaw in the first place. But I think that we'll have to do is a balance of, of size, to make it small enough to get close to compliance, but still have the visual impact that as you're driving by, you can see it, 'cause it is a pretty large building.
Did you see it? Did you find it?
Yes. In, in the bylaw itself, it can be up to 48 square feet, but there's also the provision for more or larger signs based on the context and the size of the building, and et cetera, et cetera. Also, for buildings that have faced two streets, you can have a sign on each of us for the building sign.
Without them being cumulative?
I'm not sure what.
I don't, I don't think it defines it as cumulative, like the two signs.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, they could, they can be considered separate, two separate sign areas.
When we took a first pass at trying to muddle our way through the existing sign bylaws, I think that, at that time, the, the first and biggest building in the town was Joffran, and it looked ridiculous to have a Hubble telescope, as your abuddah just chimed in, okay, but I think if you work with whoever has to approve this, we will try to find a way, you know, because you also don't want a ridiculous-looking sign on a 36,000 square foot building.
I also, I got cut off about the corner, I didn't mean the corner of the building, I meant the fact that you are on the corner of the street, you might be able to take advantage of a, a freestanding sign that you could get on the corner, that you can get people to see coming down the street.
That might be the best location for it, too.
I mean, you're gonna get the, the, if you've, you've, you know, by the time they see it on the street, they gotta turn into your driveway, by the time they see it on the building, they have to turn into the driveway, so it's kinda late.
Not being terribly familiar with this type of facility, any anticipation of, you know, loud noise, anything like that from any of the equipment, or?
Absolutely none, absolutely none.
Concerned with it?
No, this, absolutely none. The only issue that might become a noise thing is, and, and there's not one designed right now, is if there's a generator, and we lose power, the generator goes on, but that would be, you know, that wouldn't happen often.
You've not designed provisions for a generator right now?
Not as of yet, no.
I want to expand on that, we're looking into water pressures in the area, and depending on the residual pressures, there may or may not have to be a fire pump for the building. If there's a fire pump, there would have to be a standby generator possibly for that. If that's the case, there would be a generator for fire protection. Normally, those are exercised weekly, and what we would recommend is that they be scheduled to exercise either during, during the morning peak travel, AM traffic, or afternoon peak, so that they coincide with ambient background noise and doesn't adversely affect the neighborhood.
So do you have a location where you would potentially place it on the site if you'd need a generator?
We, well, that's, that's, that's further down after we deal with the fire department, we, we have no idea whether or not we need one yet.
We had received some comments from Chief Bushnell, I don't recall that being included in their bets, I don't have it in front of me, do, do you have his comment? I mean, I know he was very supportive of the project, but that being said.
Well, Joffran had to put in the pump for their fire system.
It's a bigger building.
Right, it's a bigger building.
Was it a matter of blowing a larger main down, Steve, for that?
No, they had to put in a pump, I, I guess they just didn't have the flow or something for Joffran, so they, remember we had-
No, I remember it was a big issue when they did that building.
Okay.
Is it silent on the issue?
He, Chief Bushnell does, does mention that it, it could be a requirement, and he mentions that it was required for Joffran.
We spoke to the chief, he talked about allowing us to have a dry system where he would hook up one of his trucks to it, allow him to hook up one of the trucks, so that would allow us to have a small pump, not a pump that would handle the entire full building. So that's, if, so therefore, the, the generator required would be smaller, much smaller than a normal.
Any chances it could go inside the building in your mechanical room?
No.
Small enough for that?
Could be on the roof.
Would it be a gas propane, or what, what type of generator?
The way I would, yeah, the way we like to do it is a gas system that would be on the roof, and it would, it would be inside the screening that we agreed to, so you wouldn't even see it.
Air handlers.
Right.
Okay. Paul, on these, I'm looking at this existing conditions, and up in the back left, behind the second detention basin there, you have this whole, looks like a hill of a-
I think it's, it's a hill of topsoil that was originally stripped from the area.
Oh, okay.
We're probably, we're probably gonna use that.
Okay, just everywhere?
So it'll cut down on, on any fill you have to bring in?
Yes.
Will it, will it create any runoff issue, or?
You mean, when we take it away from here?
Yeah.
You go back to the original slope? Before, before the topsoil was there?
If you look on the grading plan. Oh, he's got a retaining wall, the property, the other property's got a retaining wall on that side.
Way back there?
Yeah, way back there.
There's a retaining wall all the way back on that side?
There's a retaining wall shown all the way back there.
Yeah, along his driveway. Now, he's above us, all the way back.
You spoke to the building commissioner regarding parking?
I have not yet, no. We're waiting till we have final architectural plans, and we'll sit down with him, go over that.
Do you have the impression you picked parking based on your, the size of your property based on your experience?
That's correct.
So if you-
Five cars per thousand, we're well over the, your town's requirements, and I actually informally talked to him at last meeting, when he was sitting next to me about it, so we're well over it, but we want to formally sit down on it.
The bylaw specifically says usable space inside the building, if you start taking out hallways and so forth, we just, we just guesstimated, it's about 80% of the building was usable, that's where that number came from.
That's where the five.
Right, right.
But then they're, they're well above that.
Right.
Right.
If you, if you calculated the five spaces per thousand throughout the 36,000 square foot building, on the front foyer, this area here is, although part of the building, it's a glassed-in passageway, we would comply with that, it's 183 spaces or something like that, if you don't deduct any of the unusable space.
Great thing about math, isn't it? I, I'm not sure, and I'll defer to Jeff on where he's going with the question, but it, it leads me to a question. You're in an aquifer protection zone, and your impervious surface is significantly higher than the requirement, you're, you, it's a, it's a wonderful thing in my world to provide the amount of parking that you found in your experience is needed, but I'm wondering if it's needed all the time, and if it's not needed all the time, if there are any areas of your parking field that you can switch the type of treatment to make it more pervious?
Actually, that becomes a moot issue because of the way we've handled the stormwater on this site. Under existing conditions, in a 100-year storm event, you have 11 CFS flowing off the site. Under our design, we contain a 100-year storm, you have less than one-half of 1 CFS leaving the site, so we're building a, a project that's going to result in far less runoff under the developed conditions than you have in concurrent conditions. That's how much recharge is available in these basins, and, and because of the size of them, and also because the soils are so favorable, we're able to do that.
Do they, they're unlined basins that, that just filter the water down into the ground, or are they lined basins?
Oh, they're loomed and seeded, that's all.
So is, are we getting the same recharge potential?
You're getting more, we're increasing the recharge beyond what is currently there.
I would think a lined basin diminishes the recharge.
I would think so, too.
Right.
I would think so, too.
I mean, we did that over at Fort Kex, it's a lined basin, I believe.
It's all sand there, that'd be odd to do it that way.
But they're dealing with the same soils, so I think this is-
I mean, obviously, I, I appreciate that you, you followed the design of the stormwater guidance, but the, you know, obviously, we're trying to increase recharge, so you're saying that, I just have to follow this 'cause it's getting late in my day, you're just saying that everything is getting recharged one place or another on the site, it might have to strip over the, it has to strip over the parking, but because you have water quality controls, we have no-
You have no runoff, we're recharging it all.
Okay. That's, that's the issue.
That's great answer.
That is the issue, okay. So I guess, are we back down to just one other thing, is it just down to sidewalks now?
No, Chris, we said there were six, and then he says, this is my second and last one. I don't know, I've lost count.
We gotta deal somewhat with the photometrics and the sidewalk.
The photometrics we did, we got a shield, and now we're down to the sidewalk.
Question, Dave, talk to us a little bit about item four, which deals with the onsite treatment, I, this is more of a, a matter for the Board of Health than the Planning Board, and Peter's comment was that, you know, because we share the same resource in terms of engineering consultant, that it's, it's here in front of us, so maybe you could tell us a little bit about the conversations-
This is sewer?
With the Board of Health, I assume this has come up?
Right, Title V allows alternative systems, which will act to, uh, remove nitrogen, which basically is the, the nutrient, that and phosphorus are the two that you're trying to get rid of. So Title V recognizes that you can have these alternative systems, and it allows you to have more gallonage, however, the zoning doesn't make that distinction, so they would need some sort of relief from the zoning bylaw.
Wow.
As we interpret it.
So it requires Board of Health approval and variance from the ZBA?
I mean, we have a conflicting bylaw?
Yeah, but ours is more stringent, I find harder to believe.
It's, no, it's, it's because it's the nitrogen. It's the nitrogen, it's not, it's not title, it's, that's unusual, that, I mean, does that often come up in Title V systems?
It does, yeah.
Yeah?
In a groundwater district, it does.
The flows, Paul, the flows work.
Unfortunately, the zoning bylaw isn't specific.
Right.
It doesn't give you as much flexibility, and I don't know when it was written, perhaps it predates some of these alternative systems.
These denitification systems are, are not uncommon.
Right, what do you have planned for there, what type? I know that it's a Board of Health thing, but I'm just curious.
It'd be a fast system.
A fast, okay.
De-nitification, yeah.
Does it speak, does it speak-
Jeff and I were both on the Board of Health, so.
Does it speak only to volume, or does it speak to the amount of nitrogen removal?
It, it only speaks to volume.
It only speaks to volume, so, so, is it possible, is it possible for us to address it from an, from the water quality standpoint? Under zoning? You can waive, you can waive it if you, I mean, if you wanted, you could waive it because the nitrogen, the end result, it might be more volume, but the end result is the nitrogen is meets or is cleaner than the goal?
I'm just not familiar with it, given that it's, you know, for waste treatment.
I think he suggested it's crude, it's a crude, it's a crude zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
Whereas, whereas the Board of Health probably have a more, have more factors that go into it, so it's an easier, you know, to look at the whole system.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we're best to defer to the ZBA, you're, you're suggesting that we, we potentially review and approve in lieu of the ZBA, or?
I'm saying with the Board of Health, with the Board of Health input.
So they could address volume, and we could address quality?
We could make a recommendation, perhaps, to the ZBA, maybe that's what we should do.
Yeah, as opposed to getting a whole third group involved.
We can, we can do that.
That, the net result of, I mean, volume is not what you're concerned about with, with nitrogen removal, to protect the, to protect the water supply, you're concerned about the concentration, and if we can address the concentration, we could get to the nub of, of the, the spirit of the bylaw anyways.
So are we in agreement that a recommendation to the ZBA?
Absolutely, yeah, 'cause I don't, I don't like the idea of like, trying to win and finagle with the, with the laws themselves.
Do you see anything in there, Gino, that might be different than what we're talking about here?
Well, probably it would be cleaner to go with the-
Did you use that word on purpose?
No. Since they're going to ZBA anyway, but I, I would argue that there is a, a possible interpretation issue, because it says, "The following uses are prohibited within the water supply protection district, except where they comply with specified regulations," and then in the one that's, that's pointed out, it says, "Individual sewage disposal systems that are designed in accordance with 310 CMR 15 to receive more than 110 gallons per quarter acre."
that are designed in accordance with 310 CMR-15 to receive more than one hundred and ten gallons per quarter acre." So if 310 CMR-15 provides for denitrification systems, I think you, it's, that would be zoning enforcement officer's decision, but I, I think you could perhaps interpret this to say that's, it's okay.
And based on this comment, Gino, please clarify. They're allowed up to 550 per day and they're, they're projecting 511, is that correct?
Right.
So they're well within the reg?
Except for the volume.
With, well, they're within Title V, but not, but this says a hundred, four hundred and forty gallons per day. The zoning by law says four forty.
But the zoning by law issue is a ZBA issue.
Yes.
Right.
Except if it's interpreted the way I just stated, that the, the prohibition has an exception if, where they comply with specified regulations. And I'm not sure what specified, I assume specified regulations mean the regulations that are listed as part of the prohibition.
I guess my, my point is this, is within 310 CMR, which is Title V, okay, they're within the regs. They are planning to go to the ZBA to resolve any question they might have on it. It's kind of out of our purview.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
The idea was to do a recommendation.
So, Gino, maybe you could craft something to, to Betsy. We can forward it to, to Bob Bullock just to ask for his interpretation. And that would lead to a recommendation to the ZBA, perhaps, based on his-
That's one recommendation. The other recommendation is use our, use our engineering capability that ZBA doesn't have and say, this is, you know, the engineering review says the spirits met with the concentration of nitrogen being low.
I think in issues like this that Mike Kaliza and his board has relied on Dave and Tom's company quite a bit.
I'm just suggesting that they not have to get paid, not have to be paid by anyone to do the review again if we're doing it right now.
Okay, so let's get the interpretation from Bob Bullock. And then if you'd get that back, if you'd like, you can get it back to Betsy or to me. And then we'll take it from there. We'll pursue input from the PSC and make sure that gets to the ZBA. Is that, is that fair to everyone?
Yep.
Yep. What are we down to now?
We're down to the sidewalk.
I don't, if, if, anybody else wants to go first, go right ahead.
Are you talking about the sidewalk?
The sidewalk.
Or the walkway through the parking lot?
Yeah, everything.
Which one are you talking about?
The whole thing.
I'm talking about the whole thing.
Okay.
Site circulation, pedestrian circulation.
I just can't. I'm sorry. You can be first next week. I'm gonna be first this week.
I don't need to be first.
The length of, of your frontage on Valley Street, I'm computing to be over three hundred and thirty feet.
It's all broken up into little sections here, so you're probably right about that, yeah.
The, it, this section of town has grown a lot in the last few years. And when you come to this intersection and you say, "But where am I going?" The rest of us, you know, where, where are these people, where would these people be coming from? The rest of us look at this area and say, "It wasn't too many years ago that the property next to you, the property next to that, the three properties across the street weren't in place either." So for us, it's short-term that it doesn't look like they have any place to go. The, the C1 district extends beyond your property. They'll have someplace to go. Also, Hill Street, and we had one of the abudders speak, one of the, the older gentleman, somebody who's patient, I think it was, does walk on a regular basis. And Hill Street's a beautiful street to walk on. So you might be surprised at the number of people that are walking in the area. So I personally think it's too wide a area to just say, to just say there's no need for a sidewalk on the entire length of the frontage on Valley Street. And I only see a couple places where there's an actual constriction of your project to the length on Valley Street. I mean, I see, I see this section of maybe six parking spaces where you have only five feet clear to the right-of-way on Valley Street. And then I see another, and then I see another spot near this, you know, small little section of sidewalk across some hill where you're pretty darn close. Maybe it's as close as five feet. Those are the only two constrictions I see for a sidewalk the length of Valley. So I, other, I don't know that you made an argument for why you shouldn't put a sidewalk in. Because I think frankly, those constrictions could both be worked out. With the amount of parking you have, I don't know that you couldn't put subcompact cars and reduce the size of those, those parking spaces right there. I don't know that you couldn't narrow the width of the, of the sidewalk in that particular location and still, and still get it on your property. So it's a pretty long, it's a, this area will look different in five years. And you are a health organization, so, you know, we would like to keep the people safe and walking off the street.
Just as an aside, I did make Bob McGee aware of the conversation that took place at the last meeting. I have not heard from him, and I don't know that we've seen anything from him in terms of feasibility, anything like that, vis-à-vis Hill Street and sidewalk.
Well, there'll probably never be one on Hill Street, but it's such a, it's such a short-
I'm sorry, Valley Street.
The distance on, the distance on, on Hill is probably, I mean, is it much bigger than the three hundred feet of this guy's frontage?
I misspoke in the Valley Street.
Okay, okay. Well, the C, the, the C1 district is, goes beyond this, this site.
Paul, I see right at the end of Hill Street that you did put in a sidewalk connection to cut into the parking lot area. Human nature being what it is, I don't see people walking all the way out to the corner of Joffran, coming around the corner and walking another four to five hundred feet. When they can look across and say, "I'm going to the Row Speed Place," or "I'm going across to Tyler's" or, or Horse and Carriage or something like that, I think, like birds, people walk in a straight line. And I think that's, you even were the one that said that, you know, a sidewalk was an imperative there. I just don't see it. The developer is trying to put their base, face forward on a first-class project here. I think it's almost punitive to force sidewalks along Valley.
Seriously, punitive?
Yes, over regulation.
Yeah, I, again, I, the cost of a sidewalk on our property, because we can't put it in the street. It would have to be on our property and adds a lot of cost to the, to the project. And I also, again, we-
Oh, Chuck, power, please.
I do, too. What about this?
Red light's on. Does that work?
Oh, this here?
And also, again-
Switch mics. You're out of power.
The, the other part of the, the argument that I would make, that Tom and I always, you know, a lot of, a lot of guys start in the one end and try to negotiate all the way to the middle. We, we tend to, to bring a project that starts in the middle. We've already agreed to bring an eight-inch water line all the way up Valley Street beyond the, the corner of our property so that, so they can install a fire hydrant and, and also make the connection so we can feed Hill Street with the new water line. So I, I, you know, putting, I, I, I believe what has to happen is when that corner's developed, the other corner, I shouldn't say the Al's here, but somehow that's when the sidewalk's got to get on the other side of the road. That's where it's got to be, not on our property. Just my thought. I think people are going to come down, they'll come down through that. And I think, actually, that Mary's husband was the guy that mentioned the sidewalk, and he liked the idea of coming onto the property on, on, you know, downhill street, walking across the street onto that sidewalk and going directly on.
Did you get that, Mary? Richard?
No, she left.
You're a cousin now.
Mary, she already left, but Mary's husband, Richard?
No, no, it's Nancy's husband.
Nancy's husband, Richard.
Learn your abuddies. You'll be in trouble.
Please do. Yeah, grab a microphone, though, Betsy.
Betsy Whitney, 26th Valley Street, Pondville. I mean, first of all, I just have to tell you that I love this so much. I really do. Pondville Medical Center is, is a dream. The sidewalk on Valley Street is just not necessary. I've lived there for thirty-two, going on thirty-three years. With the exception of George Bibber, who is no longer living, who lived up on Everett Street, I never saw anybody walking on Valley Street other than me and my dogs. I see an occasional jogger. We just, and you know, it's interesting, talking about going from Valley uphill to Everett Street. And Everett Street is residential. There's not one sidewalk on Everett Street. I mean, you know, I realize there's lots of houses, but there's lots of traffic. So I just find it totally, totally unnecessary. It will ruin the configuration of your property, which I love. And the idea is to get people into your medical center, not down Valley Street. I just think it's unnecessary. I think it'll throw everything off. So that's how I feel about that, and I will never change my mind. I walk these streets. I know them. I know the traffic. I know the people. I know the pedestrians. I know just about everything, if not everything, that goes on there. And this is a good thing that's going on there. So please forget the sidewalk on Valley Street. There's the walkway-
Phil, don't, don't ask them to forget the sidewalk.
No, I'm saying that to the group. I happen to be looking at the plan.
Direct it to the chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'm saying.
Thank you.
So there is a walkway around the building, so pedestrians go from their cars into the building. Or if they want to go over to Al's place and have something, then, then you've planned for that. So that's my sidewalk comment. Now, can I ask a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Okay.
Changing the subject.
The dark green area abutting Old Pond Street. Yeah, that huge pile of dirt, which you've seen with trees growing on it. When we moved there, that had, that was fresh. There was nothing on it. It's, I, I forget that it's a big pile of dirt. It looks just like a hill. You're going to-
We're going to reuse it on the site, yes.
Okay. I'm curious, I know what it looks like now across from the Stone Chapel. So what will you do with that big pile of dirt? Spread it all around? You're going to leave existing foliage or are you going to use that?
No, the vegetation comes off the hill. We reuse it as topsoil.
Okay. I guess, where will you be putting it?
Along parking lot.
Okay. And so pretty much-
Inside the detention basin, yeah, we'll use it.
You will leave it natural, bordering Old Pond Street?
Right.
Okay, it could be tidied up. And the, the foundation that's there, that would be-
That's gonna go.
Okay. I had just written, um, generator, if you lose your power, you're going to be listening to my generator, so we're even, no problem. And I, you're going to go before the zoning board of appeals relative to the two driveways?
Yes.
I love those two driveways. I think they're great. I mean, that's, you know, I don't own this side of town, but I'm pretty protective of it. And I'm happy to hear that you have a landscaping program that will, what, what's your name again? I'm sorry?
Chuck Chaketa.
Chuck, okay. A landscape, well, a, you know, maintenance program. That's, that's wonderful. Okay, well, I think that's about what I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I have been taking notes. I, I mean, I apologize. I know I seem preoccupied because, you know, I know the folks here this evening and folks at home, I mean, just for, for your knowledge, there was fifty-seven comments and various recommendations. So, you know, I've tried to map it out, and maybe it's a good time for me just to, to outline what I believe is the roadmap. And we can see if we have agreement from the applicant, from members of the board and, you know, our consultants. So you're looking for approval contingent as far as this board on the comments and recommendations of the Norfolk Fire Department dated April 2nd, 2013. And we have those here, and they do include reference to the fire pump, water pump, whether or not it's required. I'm not sure that's understood, but at least it's a, it's an action item that will remain open and will be an important contingency as we go forward. Verification of adequate parking is determined by the Norfolk Building Commissioner. We agree that that's an outstanding item. The stop signs at the exit drive, that's number three. Item four, recommendations of the Design Review Board with respect to building details and landscaping plan. I believe that's still outstanding.
Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, okay.
Now, there's various waivers you're looking for from this board. One is the seventy-foot frontage road easement, which is comment number nineteen, comment number nineteen. Another is the test pit for the roof recharge system, which is comment number twenty-six. The third waiver is the pole height, which is comment number forty-five. This is for your lighting plan. The fourth item is the waiver for six-point-five-foot candles versus the five-foot candle requirement. That's comment number forty-six. And then the fifth waiver would be for the foot candles at the property line. This is comment number forty-seven. You're asking for relief from the point-two-five-foot requirement to one-point-zero feet. And then, last but not least, and subject to some further discussion here, the question of sidewalks.
We've gone a couple of those. I think they clarified on the setback that they are more than seventy feet back with their building, and they do not need that waiver?
No, no, no.
Part of it.
There's two, there's a seventy-foot setback in the zoning by law, and then there's a seventy-foot easement requirement in the rules and regulations. That's what they need the waiver for. They do not need the variance from the zoning, because they do meet, meet that.
And then on the foot candles, is that still going to be a variance after they add the shield, or will that one be-
We shouldn't need that with the shield.
And so this is onsite or at the property line?
At the property line.
Okay, so you expect to be at the point-two-five?
We can shield it at the property line if you don't want to light your streets, yes.
You know, that'd be an interesting thing, though. I mean, have we heard from Chuck Stone on this yet?
You know, on, on that item, I mean, my preference would be to go ahead and grant the waiver and then to work that out, because it might be in the best interest of the town to exceed the point.
Let me put it this way, for a cost-saving standpoint, you know, for a while, we were only lighting up half our center. I don't know if we still do, I haven't been paying attention. But the point is, I mean, these are real and recurring costs that towns absorb, is street lighting. And if this thing is basically just going to, on a diminishing basis, light up Valley Street, I don't see what the downside is.
I, I would suggest that lighting the neighbors' property is not really in our best interest.
Well, you know, how afar it reaches into, of course, I'm not advocating shining into someone's window, and I hope it would not. I don't know, you know, the actual placement of the house wasn't on the, the plan. However, if it was less than a street light and it's just hitting the property line on the opposite side of Valley Street, I don't consider that a bad thing. And I'd be curious to see what's- And I'd be curious to see what the chief of police has to say.
Why don't we shield it to point-two-five on the opposite street line? On this side, rather than this side? Then the spillage is in the public way where you want it.
I think that would be great.
It's not unreasonable.
I think that'd be great.
Got that, Gino?
Actually felt that's what he was doing all along. I thought that's what he was always proposing.
Okay, we'll come back to sidewalks. And we agree that there's a special permit required for signage that you've not applied for yet.
Right.
And then there's various actions which you'll be looking for, from, in one case, the Board of Health, and in other cases, from the ZBA. You've got some things to do relative to onsite waste treatment, building height, the amount of impervious surface area, and the driveway location.
Jeff, I have a question for the architect on the height. Regarding building height. How... I'm not sure how Bob judges where the height... I guess it's a flat building, so it wouldn't matter.
Building height is measured from the average of the centerline of the street opposite to the highest roof steel, main steel on the roof of a flat roof.
Okay.
According to the bylaw.
So therefore, your cluster of mechanicals are not part of it, and therefore, the screening around it is not part of it?
Correct.
Okay.
You did get the... You didn't mention the screening, but the screening of the transformers was discussed.
No, no, I'm talking... I was just... That was our building's height question.
That's just for Jeff, I think she's making the comment.
In Jeff's list.
Right.
Thank you.
There is one thing that we didn't talk about, and because there's some comments here, and I don't quite grasp them. And it has to do with the walkway that connects you to the adjacent property. PSC says, "We concur, the sidewalk walkway is an appropriate site amenity, we recommend the painted sidewalk be replaced with a curb and sidewalk." Is there room there to do that, or is it just a different texture that you were thinking of?
There is... If we raised, or pushed the curbing out to here, to protect the pedestrians, then you would lose five feet of your turning aisle.
Oh, okay. So therefore, it'd be nineteen foot versus twenty-four?
Correct. The curbing would take up a foot, and the walkway would be five.
Is that what you meant by curbing?
Yeah, that area, yeah.
But, now, you were talking about just painting it?
Right.
Is that right?
Striping it, just like you striped the paint of the parking space.
What would happen if it was stamped or something, so it just gave a little bit of a different texture to it, just so it makes it more obvious that it's a walkway?
And we could do something like that.
Does anyone think that that might be an appropriate thing of the parking lot?
What I'm concerned with is-
Longevity?
Well, no, not so much that. We deal with that right out here on this. But the learning... Losing travel aisles, I mean, nineteen feet gets tough.
Right, no, he's not saying...
He's not saying that.
Saying keep it all level, but just change the texture, so it might be stamped, or it might have a tactile-
Sometimes people refer to it as traffic calming, because it alerts the vehicle to the-
Might even be a different material. It may not be the same asphalt, it could still be continuous, but you might change the material.
So the car knows it's there, but you're sharing the space?
But would it be the same width as proposed?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Keep it the same, just make it sort of stand out a little bit more than just by painting.
I suppose it's not a high-volume place like Dunkin' Donuts, where people... I mean, you wouldn't believe how many car accidents would happen at Dunkin' Donuts, people banging into each other, that's all, that's what I was thinking.
Right. Now, Steve, your comment is that the paint comes and paint goes, but the texture difference will last a longer time.
Yeah. Again, I point out our maintenance program, we manage these buildings not... It's not just left to happen. So, what we do is, we'll stripe and restripe parking lots, likely every two years, sometimes even sooner than that, if it wears off. So, and the other part of that is that side of the parking lot, one of the things that we've talked about is trying to maintain that, or use that for employees, trying to keep the front of the building, the whole front side for patients and to the building. So the back and that end will probably end up being employees, which will, you know, which will have less activity. So I don't really see it as a major issue. I... Even if it was a different surface, to me, it has to be like a yellow or a blue walkway that would really stand out, that's gonna make the difference. Sometimes with the white, you know, when the snow comes and all that stuff, you're not gonna see it, so. It's... We did the same thing in Middleborough, we have a couple of walkways through the parking lot, and that's makes them stand out pretty well that way.
Maybe we can ask Design Review to weigh in.
So right now, you're depicting what, curb stops with a painted...
No. Here it is, right here.
At...
Just paint.
I work at Wellesley College, and we've done tremendous amounts of studies as the best way to treat the crosswalks across the main college road.
Yes.
We paint them green.
Oh, that really odd green.
It's just green.
We can do that.
It's pretty effective. I mean, whatever color you decide, but that's...
We could do that.
So, is there any curbing at all?
No.
No. No. See, this is a-
Only along here.
This here is a grass strip. That's a grass strip, and this is adjacent to the grass-
With curving around it.
Yeah, with curving around it. This is adjacent to it. This is the problem, constriction. All around here is not a problem, because it's the interior drive, because there's only parking on that side.
And you think the problem is where, Andrea?
This is the constriction. When people talk about, you know, changing the radius, it's right there. So the curbing here would be the issue. You still have to get across, so, you know, you gotta stop somewhere.
If I might add, that could be labeled as employees' parking. And as Chuck indicated, that is more stable parking, they come in for the day. And they're there for the full time that the offices are open, so you're not going to get much backing or entering cars in that area with employee parking, as you would with patients coming in and out. So that if we label that row employee parking, that would indicate that there would be less backing traffic and constrictions that would use that portion with the sidewalk that was painted. Makes sense?
So therefore, the less traffic, the less possibility of interaction with pedestrians, therefore...
And I guess the reason I'm kind of hesitating a little bit is, whenever you put two surfaces together, whether you stamp it or cement it at the same level, you always have a maintenance problem, it's always gonna be cracking and issues, I mean, it's just... So-
You've seen our roundabouts, then?
Yes. I've seen the brick falling apart, they used the wrong brick, by the way.
Wait, we need some-
But if we painted it green, we put a white line on the edge and painted it green, all of that works, but having two different surfaces budding up like that, it's just gonna be a maintenance nightmare.
What is the state of the art here as far as, I'll call them crudely, speed bumps in terms of, you know, controlling the speed of traffic at the facility? I mean, where you have some crosswalks, you've got some of these walkways that we're discussing, you have these crossing the parking lot, I mean, does it make sense to consider something? And I'm not suggesting that they're asphalt, you know, speed bumps, there's other things I know they use, so that people are more conscious that they're approaching or crossing an area where pedestrians-
We've used the yellow, the yellow-
Oh, yeah.
Hard rubber speed bumps before. And I don't really have a problem doing that, and if we have issues in a parking lot, we always put them down. The only problem with them is that snow plowing becomes an issue, and so some places, we will put them down, and we take them up for the winter, and then put them back down again. I mean, it's, again, what we normally do is monitor a situation, if we have a raceway, then we've got, we put the speed bumps in, because obviously, we don't want people getting... And there's a building impurity that we have, that we put those in, because the people go around the back corner and they fly, so we put the hard rubber, yellow rubber things. And if you want them in a certain spot, we can put them there, where, you know, people are going, driving by that walkway.
If I may add to that, it's interesting, every site has its own characteristics, and once it starts getting used, you'll be able to see if there are any problems with traffic speeding up in a certain area, or pedestrians cutting across grass. A lot of work that my partner and I used to do in universities, is we do a quad, and we do it all in grass, and never put any sidewalks in, and about a year, a year and a half later, you'd see where to put the sidewalks, because the students would make their own paths. And that's how you would do it. So I think that in this type of situation, I'd wait on traffic.
People have been telling that story for thirty years.
But you can always build a contingency like we did at Dunkin' Donuts.
It's true.
That was the one area I saw for some improvement in sidewalks. I like what you did from Hill Street with the sidewalk, and I think getting, you know, into the site from that direction, even coming from 115, you're pretty well covered. Where I think something might happen that's not covered as well, is somebody, a mom might drop their kid off for an hour practice at four kicks, and decide to, you know, coincide her doctor's appointment, so that she can run across the street, and so I kind of think you may eventually be getting some foot traffic that might want to come up, and maybe a sidewalk along here, or maybe even-
Well, there's a sidewalk all along the street already.
Look inside the street.
I know, but I'm talking connecting, and this is one of the things that the consultants were talking about, connecting these internal sidewalks down to the Pine Street sidewalks. And you're right, I mean, people will cut across the grass, they'll get there. That was sort of the direction and area, right? I thought that just a couple more connections might be great, whether it's something along here, or something along here, but I do think you may get some flow of people coming from that direction.
We could paint it on our site.
You said that the grades are the same in between the Medical Center and Rocco Plaza.
Right.
What's the transition there? What, is it going to be paved, it's gonna be?
Paved sidewalk through here, that's all. See where the grass strip is along here?
Yes.
The sidewalk will go right through to the driveway.
So basically, gonna be curbing on both sides, and what we'll do is, we're gonna cut in a, like a crowned sidewalk, right over the grass path.
Okay.
So it'll be handicap, you know, less one and twenty, so, you know, handicap, a wheelchair can get over it, no problem. But it's basically gonna be just a paved sidewalk between us.
Walter, I'll just get you a microphone there.
Mr. Chairman, are there any crosswalks on Pine Street proposed, either in front of this property, or to Michelle's point, in front of Four Kicks, or any... Are there any existing ones?
I think the only crosswalk in that vicinity would be at the intersection of 1A and 115.
You're right.
Well, if we get foot traffic, as Michelle suggests, coming across from Four Kicks, or any other business on that side, or the other way around, there may be a requirement for a crosswalk somewhere between the intersection of 115 and 1A, and perhaps Valley Street and Pine Street there. Just a thought.
Well, my understanding is that they can only have crosswalks where it connects a sidewalk with a sidewalk. There's only a sidewalk on one side of the street here. So I don't think that they can put a crosswalk in if there's no sidewalk on the other side to connect to.
Which is why there's one at the intersection, because there's a sidewalk on the other side of the street. How about coming down Valley? Did the sidewalk stop at this property?
They have a crosswalk here.
There's a crosswalk there.
They're proposing a handicap ramp. I mean, it's not gonna connect anything at this point, but it's the curb cut that you need to get off the sidewalk.
Oh, that'll cross Valley Street.
Yeah.
Correct.
And is Valley, in its current configuration, does it have an island with two feeders, or does it have, or is it just one Y?
It is gone, it is gone.
Right, it's all... Now it's just Y.
It used to.
Yeah, that's why I couldn't remember.
It's a lateral intersection.
I think with the 115 project, it was finally wiped out.
But then where does the sidewalk... The sidewalk goes to Everett, right? The sidewalk continues up 115 to Everett?
Goes all the way.
I think it goes all the way up to-
Goes to Town Hall, Town Line.
Right.
Okay, okay. Nobody else is piping up. The Hill Street connection's good. I think it's short-sighted to suggest that people in the future are only coming from Hill Street. I think that there's, there will be in time, people coming down Valley Street. Totally respect everything Betsy says, but I don't necessarily think she's thinking about the future, or that poor jogger, who is jogging down Valley Street. Because there are people that, there are, there are most of, many of us, as we get older, look for the shortest distance, but then there are others that are looking to go for a walk. So I'm not, I'm... I hear everybody saying the Hill Street connection's good, I think Hill Street connection's good as well. But I don't think it solves the problem in and of itself, I think there's too much frontage to be left open like that, and if you take the argument that there's nobody there to use it, then we wouldn't have sidewalks anywhere in this town, because every site is the first site. And, you know, it's too late, you only get one shot with these sites, so...
Can I just respond?
No, wait, wait.
We have to get you a microphone, that's the problem.
Oh.
There we go.
If I may, I have thought about people walking down Valley Street. Where are they going? To Dedham Street, to 1A? To walk where? To turn around and walk all the way back?
To the properties that aren't developed yet, Betsy.
I understand that.
To the properties that are going to develop on Valley Street.
However, what I'm saying right now is that we're focusing on this project, on this property, and putting a sidewalk in, in my opinion.
No, no, this is planning, we plan for the future. We always plan on what's gonna happen as a...
And so I'm telling you my vision of planning, because I see that constructing a sidewalk on this particular, in this particular project, will be, have a very negative effect on it, is what I'm saying.
And, Al, you know, I'm sorry to, you know, address you, but where you have come to the board, and you have conceptual plan, at least, across the street, are you familiar with what exists across the street in terms of the, on the Pine Street side of that parcel? Is there a sidewalk on Pine Street that there is, correct? I mean, the state, when they put in 115, right?
There's a sidewalk the state just put in.
I mean, do you have any thoughts? I mean, if you're gonna be coming to the board here in the future, I mean, what's your thinking? I mean, you're more familiar with the construction details than the board here, in terms of how high the bar is to-
I don't wanna get in between these two giants here.
I mean, it's gonna come up, I mean, it's gonna come up anyway, when you come back to-
Oh, yeah. I think it goes up there. In front of the corner of Pine and Valley, and it'll connect to the sidewalk in front of these gentlemen's. And you'll be able to run right up to the corner of 115, so I don't think that's really the issue, it's whether, you know, you're gonna start running sidewalks all the way down Valley Street, back to 1A. And you have Hattigan's Building, there's no sidewalk in front of that, then you have Old Pond Street, then you have Betsy's House, so there are no sidewalks, probably not a lot of development between them, excuse me, the medical building and Betsy's House is probably the other side of the street that might need a sidewalk. That would be, that's all open for development.
You had raised that issue.
From Hill Street, down to Rowene's Building. From Hill Street, down to Rowene's Building. And maybe a crosswalk would be something that you'd think about at Hill Street.
Good suggestion.
If there was a sidewalk, it's probably smarter to be on the other side of the street. Because that's where all the development will be.
Well, I'm just curious as to, who knows what the layout of the road is? If the layout of the road is touching this lot, it, there must be a lot of space on the other side of the road, right? If it's a 24-foot wide road, it's probably a 50-foot right-of-way, so there's probably over 20 feet.
It's not touching. The road's not touching.
The center line is centered, so you don't know which way.
On this side, close to. Paul, what's the roadway layout? See, that's the pavement.
And there's...
It touches right there. I don't know the width off here, but it's gotta be like 40, and that's a 24-foot road through there. So, you've gotta have surplus room on the other side. You can see it coming in here.
Mm-hmm.
That's the property line. So, it's gonna have serious shoulder space on the opposite side.
It's an old building on the corner of Hill and Valley. And I'm assuming when that gets developed, that has to go away. But, pretty old. I don't know how old it is, Betsy.
Is that the boarded-up building?
Yeah.
That's, yes. I don't know who I'm allowed to speak to at this point. But that is Virginia Sterns' building, and it was the Pondville Post Office. It was built by Virgil Pond in 1890. So, it's very old. It's on five acres of land, which has been for sale for probably seven years. But I agree with Al that the other side of the street would be more logical. This is my opinion, and I hope it's appropriate to express that. Now, I, I would, I would be, and I do support the idea of sidewalks. But I think on the other side of Valley Street, as Al said, makes sense if we're planning for the future. As I said, Andrea, I'm planning for this project, and I'm worried about having them to change the whole configuration of this beautiful project.
No one suggested that. That would be...
It's, that's how it hit me. So, I'm just, and I'm, I'm entitled to express my, my strong opinion. This project looks good to me. And I, I don't wanna have to have the whole thing all changed because of a sidewalk that might someday need to go all the way down to Route 1A. I agree with Al. Isn't it nice when we agree?
Is there a way to put a provision so that you could cut through that properly, property from where the Hill Street intersection is? You know, somebody on foot could just traverse the property and get to Rocco Plaza?
I think that's it.
It's here. Well, it doesn't show, I'm not sure I see it.
Yeah, it's under the tree.
It's right here.
Oh, it's under the tree. That's...
I gotta look under the tree.
No, but right here, it is showing it right on this plan here.
See, this is what Andrea was talking about, is just a sidewalk.
And you're gonna do a curb cut.
Jeff, you raised the issue that you, you had hoped that Bob McGee would, would weigh in on this. And I don't know, you're, the idea of, of a, of a sidewalk on one side of the street or the other is not uncommon. Whether or not it has to be on both sides of the street would be uncommon. So, if it's this side of the street or the other side of the street, if we know that ahead of time, I mean, that's, that's worth thinking about. To not have a sidewalk on, you know, on Valley Street?
On either side.
On either side, seems short sighted.
I mean, what would it take if you reoriented that so that the parking spot furthest to the right, off the back of that, going straight ahead? I'm just trying to see if you could tie into Valley Street on the other side of that intersection with Hill Street, so that you would have a contiguous path in the future if sidewalks were to get constructed on the other side. Yeah, but it's there, but I'm saying it's here. Because I mean, what we're saying, I think, is putting sidewalks in the future here.
She's saying also here.
Well, but I'm, but I'm saying if you could, if you could...
I had two options on the table. I'm gonna see which one got support.
You know what, for the number of pedestrians we're talking about, again, I'd go with the street mind theory, and...
How, how high is the bar to, to do something like that, to get to the other side of the intersection of Hill and Valley?
I'm not sure what you're referring to. You wanna take the parking?
Shifting that north.
I had the wrong direction.
To the opposite side of Hill.
Yeah. If there was a future crosswalk there.
Oh, yeah. Not enough. Oh, he could do that. This is the best part.
The moment you move it from here to there, you need to take out a parking space to get there, that's all.
No, but if you move it to the other side of Hill...
Yeah, he's, he's got the right, he did the same way Jeff did it.
And come out here, up there, and then across.
Yeah, I'll do it this side. Go right in this way.
Yeah, we could do that. We could align with the other side of Hill Street by doing that.
And then in the future, maybe that's the, the area of focus for sidewalk, is that opposite side? Is that what you're suggesting? The opposite side of Valley Street in the future? And there would be a contiguous path at that point.
At which time, if there was ever a sidewalk, we'll crosswalk it.
Right.
What do you think?
Couldn't make any use to it. I personally wouldn't vote for it left open like that. I would wanna have a better sense of the geometry of the other side of the street, the, take a look at the zoning map in relation to this, to where the likely development's gonna be. I mean, I think if, you know, Al's given it some thought, you know, he's probably right. I'd like to verify that. And the point, the point that, the point that Steve, and, you know, frankly, the economics, we often, when people ask for a waiver of sidewalks, we often ask that they put a dollar value into the sidewalk mitigation fund. So, that's, when you ask for a waiver, you often, you often get asked to put the dollar value in, so...
I think an interesting point is that in, in most development in towns where we're planning for the future, and we look for Lincoln, is to spread it out amongst as many developers as possible that are coming in with projects. And looking at the layout on Valley Street, seeing that the edge of pavement, edge of traveled way is on the property line on this side, and seeing that the stone bound and layout that comes off Route 115 shows that there's approximately 18 to 20 feet on the opposite side of Valley Street, between the edge traveled way and the sideline of the layout of the street, would seem that where this developer is participating in extending the water mains, that that would be the linkage for this project. And that maybe a different project on the opposite side would be the sidewalk on Valley Street.
I'm missing that. On the plan I see, I don't see the other side of the right-of-way.
I can look here.
Just that one spot?
That's, that's where...
Conditions Plan Sheet Number Two. We'll see how off-center, offset the roadway is. Here's the easterly side. Here's the westerly side, right up against our property line. And there's a large shoulder on the other side. This is all shoulder on the opposite side.
Can you run your finger again, Paul? Sorry, I was looking down. No, that's the central line. That's the edge of pavement.
I see, he's saying that's not central line. That double line, he's saying is edge of pavement. Are you sure that's not central line?
No, I'm sorry. That's central line. That's, you see the property line over here?
Yeah.
That's gonna come down along here.
Yeah.
Because this roadway's not wide enough to occupy the 40-foot way.
So, basically, we're almost out to the word valley. Below valley and above the street.
Right. You've got a, you've got a very large shoulder on the other side.
How did you get to Valley and Street from that, from that bound?
Up here. That's what they're saying. It's about... Go up to 115.
Yeah, I see the bound.
Okay, and then go above, go above street and below valley on a straight line. And that's your shoulder. Is that right, Paul?
Right.
It's a variable width.
It's a, it's a 40-foot, at least a 40-foot way. If you pull 40 feet off of here, it's gonna bring you up to, over there.
I, I, you know, I would love to, I think that, I think this is all makes a lot of sense. I'd like to verify it.
I think we should move forward. I think we should move forward on this.
Well, I mean, I do understand your point about the infrastructure upgrades in terms of water supply. I do understand that. In terms of future development, if, if that's a betterment in terms of their ability to develop, I mean, maybe that's something that would be taken into consideration as far as future, future development in that area, in terms of the requirement of vis-à-vis sidewalks. I mean, Steve?
I'm done.
I think in light of what you said about bringing the fire protection down, and hearing the residents of Pondville in total support of this, I think it's loud and clear that fire protection would be a heck of a lot better addition than a sidewalk in this neighborhood.
I don't know that the subject is going away permanently. It might be going away as far as this project, depending on, you know, the board, and we need to vote on this. But, so Andrea, I'm not, I'm not sure that it's going away totally in terms of the sidewalk for that segment of the, of Valley Street.
Right.
In the sense, I mean, there's, there's other development that's gonna be taking a place, taking place. I'm just, what I'm saying is, you know, if it's a matter of that standing in the way of us moving ahead, that's the concern I think we're hearing is to...
I think it's quite...
Delay approval of the, the project.
I think if we haven't heard from DPW, and we're asking questions about the width of a right-of-way, and the pavement area on the other side of the street, then I think that it's, you know, it's possible to get that information before, before we draft the decision. I would like the board, just for the sake of the applicant, in the years I've been on the board, we've never waived the sidewalk without getting a, without having the sidewalk mitigation be put into it. And to, while I, while I totally respect that the water main coming in, or whatever, whatever the other improvement was, you know, there's other, there's other improvements, but we've never done, we've never done one infrastructure benefit in lieu of another infrastructure benefit. And when anybody asks for a waiver of a sidewalk, we, if we were going to grant it, we granted it with a mitigation fund contribution. Because there's plenty of places we need sidewalks. So, I would say that in my mind, those are two open questions as to how the sidewalk issue gets addressed. I do, I do recognize that the Hill Street, Hill Street connection's important. The Hill Street modification you suggest is a good, is valuable. But, you know, 300, 300 feet of, of sidewalk just going poof is a, a pretty big message to send to other people that might not wanna put a sidewalk on their property. So, I'd like to know, I'd like to know that the other side, the other side could support it. And probably this is a street where only one side of the street needs to have a sidewalk. That may very well be true. I just don't know that until I've seen it. Until I've seen, until I've seen the right-of-way, and I know it can happen on the other side.
Enter this to depth.
We can do, we can do the research. We can determine where this line continues, if that's, would make you more comfortable.
Well, that with the topography.
Okay.
We have a project in front of us. You have an opponent, Jeff.
Jeff, could I say something?
Yeah, I was just trying to see if I had anything from Bob McGee, but I don't.
The, I moved the sidewalk in front of Leo's Landing, the gas station. I graded out and agreed to build a small natural-faced wall.
Right.
And was not charged the sidewalk fund. So, there's an example of giving something different than the money, and having the board approve that. And that was as recent as two weeks ago. So, I think that's pretty current. I think anybody that knows the properties that run down Valley Street know that, although there may be development beside Betsy's house, that I have a piece there, and it may get developed and, to maybe some duplexes. But across the street is where all the development's gonna be. Parcel after parcel is vacant there. So, really, if there was a sidewalk necessary, which it probably should be, it would be on that side of the street. And it should really give the people the ability to walk up to the corner, and then cross at a walk at the corner. Because coming down the hill, and then taking that right on Valley Street is like a death trap. If you put a crosswalk, the more I think about it, if you put a crosswalk down at Hill Street to a sidewalk on the other side, you could get, you could get killed there. Now, I know you have a place to get serviced, but I don't think that's a great idea.
So, a mid-block is, in your opinion?
I don't think that's a great idea. Think you'd run that sidewalk down to the intersection, put the crosswalk and walk...
What about the connectivity to Everett and Hill from there?
People fly around that corner. And they cut down on Valley Street, you're going 35, 40 miles an hour. And if there's a, a crosswalk 200 feet down, you could get someone killed there.
Yeah, it's part of the whole visuals, and we're not, we're not changing the road. We're not doing a traffic study, so we don't, you know, we can't verify that.
Just my input.
Pretty good input. It's, you've given some thought to this area. As has Betsy.
What are we seeing? Are we keeping this open? Anything closing this?
I think that's, I mean, that's the only sticking point that I can see, is just the sidewalk at this point, correct?
For some people.
Well, we're waiting for design review.
Yeah, I mean, there's some contingencies, but that's the only one of significant cost, if you will, that, that we haven't come to terms, I think.
When we prepare the final plan for endorsement, we will have done the property line research along here. And you'll see that there's more than ample shoulder area to put the sidewalk. And it's fairly flat through there, too, so there's not a problem with grades.
Okay. We're ready?
Jeff, you raised two issues on illumination. One was what we heard, which was going, you had 46 and 47. One was the illumination across the street. And what was the second illumination issue? Pole height?
26. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I had pole at height is different. That's 45. But you said 46 and 47?
45, 46, 47.
So, did the one shield take care of 46 and 47?
I think what we said is, on the question of the property line, which is 47, that it's going to be...
That's the shield.
.25. Or actually, zero, I think you said, when it reaches the opposite side of the right-of-way, there's a...
Yeah, but at their property line, we'll stay at .25.
Yeah, that's 46.
At the base of the pole.
At the base of the pole versus how it stretches out. We don't, yeah, that doesn't seem to be a problem. I, I don't think it's a problem. Do you see a problem there?
Tripping on my feet in this parking lot back here, like parking lots be well with.
Yeah.
Oh, short of planning board meetings.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you actually referred to that parcel across the way in here, so we can refer to that, actually. It's in here somewhere.
About the lighting, Jeff? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, you can refer to that parcel in terms of the lighting requirement.
I think as long as you're at .25 on their property line, there'll be zero when they get across the street.
And certainly by the time you hit the 18-foot shoulder.
Yeah, I agree with Michelle, that if we don't, if we don't need to waiver it at the property line, we've taken care of the neighbor across the street.
Right. I don't think that waiver will be applicable anymore.
Well, but it's at our, it's at your property line.
Yeah, they can meet the .25 at their property line.
Okay, that would conform with the regulation. I thought, we were talking about sealing it to .25 across the street at that property line.
All right.
To benefit by this lights village in the public way.
So, we could just, could we describe it as... So we could just, could we describe it as the right-of-way on the other side of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was looking for a number because I think it's, I think it's referred to one here somewhere, but
A different one, not number 47, right?
Yeah, somewhere.
We grant the waiver, but we may end up not even shielding.
I think you still need to.
If we're going to reach all the way across the street, including the shoulder, which may be the road and sidewalk in some future day.
Right, once we show the property line in here, we'll have a better idea. Right now, there's no property line there.
Yeah, so it'll be to the
But you promised that already.
Right, that's the edge of the travelway there. We're going to put the property line in, so we know what we got.
Right. Light the future sidewalks so we don't have to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so in terms of the, the process here, so we will entertain a, a motion, but yeah, we need to close the public hearing first. So any other comments as far as the
Do you want to close?
Yeah, they have to request.
Any, any other comments? Questions?
You ready to close, Paul?
We're set.
Okay.
As in a butter, I'm very happy with how the detailed discussion has led to what seems like a really good plan to go forward. I appreciate all the comments and, and all of the careful thoughts that go into it. Thanks, Al, especially. So I'm, I'm happy if we can close it.
Okay. So you'd like us to proceed and close the public hearing?
We're good.
Okay. Motion?
Kind of move that we close the public hearing for CT Compass Development, Pine Street Medical Center.
Second?
Contingent upon receiving additional information.
Yeah, we have to receive information from the design review board.
That could be part of our decision.
What is condition? That's part of your motion.
Close?
To, to, well, to be able to
Still close it here.
You don't want to close it without leaving an option of being able to take more information in.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second. Go ahead.
Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's in terms of, yeah, we can't accept additional information if we close the hearing.
Once it's closed, you can't accept any new stuff, so.
Even though that's a, that's one of our
Okay.
Part of our decision, though, is that we have to, they have to provide that information.
They provide it to us, but we have to leave the option open for us to receive the information from the design review board. And since they haven't met yet, so you probably
From the design review board, I see.
Right.
So we can make it contingent upon favorable determination, if you will.
Contingent upon feedback, feedback from the design review board, whatever that feedback may be.
And our engineer on this
Title V.
On the Title V stuff. We don't care about waiting for the, we don't need the parking calculations you had mentioned earlier?
The Title V won't be, I mean, that's not going to be
Well, that's just getting, I know, but we're writing a recommendation, so we're going to get the information, so we want to see it.
Yeah, but that's That's really just to facilitate, we're not, we're not driving that train, that's not.
That's more input to ZBA or not, or may not be needed, but that shouldn't affect the decision.
Okay, so we can make it contingent upon input and favorable determination from the design review board, because that's an extension of the planning board. And I don't know that we need the contingency as far as the ZBA.
No. No, I mean, those are zoning bylaws. We do not, that's not within our purview. They find something wrong with it.
Okay.
We're still writing recommendations on the helping line.
What we'll do, I'll tell you what we'll do. We'll make this contingent upon the input and favorable determination from the design review board. We've got the building commissioner. You've got the fire chief. And we're going to put in there the DPW, okay? And I'll look for some type of formal response from the DPW director as far as this whole issue.
We have heard from the water department, but not from DPW.
Okay. He's actually in charge of the water as well as, you know, the sidewalks and infrastructure, so, so that would encompass all of it. And I believe that's it.
That's it.
So input and favorable determination from the design review board, building commissioner, fire chief, and the DPW.
Is that your motion, Michelle?
So moved.
I'll second as amended.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed with those contingencies. So now with that, we're going to
Go ahead.
Seek, seek, seek an approval with contingencies, I think, at this point in time. Is that the way that we want to approach it? I mean, does the board, is the board
I'd rather have the information before we, before we vote to approve.
I mean, we've defined the contingencies.
Working on a draft decision by the same time.
Yeah.
Can you, I mean, obviously, you're meeting the, uh, design review on Wednesday. The other issues, do you think you can wrap those all up this week? Everybody's around.
And then CBA tomorrow night and side review tomorrow.
And then touch bases with Bob and building and Bob, Bob and building and Bob and DPW.
We can do both of those.
Spend the day, Paul. Okay, so then therefore we'd have everything, Steve, by the time we can review it.
That's fine.
The idea was we were going to have a, possibly have a hearing on the 29th so that we could review the decision and then vote on it?
Oh, that's right. We did schedule that.
One person's idea.
Yep. Yep. And if we can, we'll just continue.
You're going to be in, you're going to be in Montreal next week.
On the 29th.
On Monday or Tuesday?
I'm looking to leave Tuesday, but I wouldn't do a meeting on Monday. I won't be gone all week.
Yeah, that's what I meant. You were, I was giving you the out to say I'm out on Monday.
29th is okay with me.
That's fine.
But you're
Yeah, it's a bad week for me. I'm traveling most of the week, yeah.
The other thoughts as far as Deets?
Well, after that, you miss me and so you can, you can schedule it anytime.
After the 30th.
No, your town meeting the following night.
What about the 30th, is it?
You can't do it on, you can't do it on election night.
Oh, got.
Does it make sense to vote on it now?
Right, if I can, I miss, can't.
Subject to those things.
I review one.
We're waiting
You can review, but it's available.
It's, is it an up or down? But it's an up or down with conditions and the conditions aren't articulated.
Well, actually, I've tried to do that. I've actually, I've actually tried to do that here. I mean, recognize that the special permit is really an independent process. So I have articulated the various contingencies, waivers, so we could actually do it. We could do it.
You're suggesting that we read your list and see if we thought of anything else?
I can, I mean, I can go through it. It's, it's pretty close to what was originally referenced. So the approval would be contingent on the comments and recommendations of the Norfolk Fire Department in the letter dated April 2nd, 2013. The verification of adequate parking is determined by the Norfolk Building Commissioner. The screening in rooftop of
Why don't you make this an official motion? That way we won't have to read it a second time. Why don't you make an, make the motion to, to approve contingent on this and then
Okay. Okay, I will proceed and make a motion and we can circle back if we need to adjust anything, so.
You know what, but we're doing this in the abstract. Can you guys live with a week or so? What's your schedule?
Um, soon as possible.
I understand, but
We're losing Andrea is part of the, part of the concern.
She's getting off the board.
But we lose Michelle also to travel.
Conference.
I say we get it.
Real life. You know those architects, they're always going somewhere.
We can capture this.
Yeah, we can have the contingencies pretty well embraced. The waivers are listed on the cover sheet.
Go ahead and read them off and we'll make sure we're on the same page.
We're looking for a waiver on impact status and assessment report. We need a waiver on traffic congestion control and analysis. Need a waiver on traffic impact analysis report. We need a waiver for the walkway on Valley Street. We need a waiver for entrance ramp sloping to the street because we have more than one. We need a waiver on walkway on Valley Streets. That's actually listed twice. It's on the two, two sections of your bylaw. We need a waiver on vertical concrete curbing in lieu of slope granite curbing. We need a waiver on the vertical datum that's used. The bylaw refers to a 1929 datum, which is no longer really in use. We're using the 1988 datum. We're looking for a waiver on a light pole height greater than 15 feet. We're looking for a waiver on the outport underneath the light. We have six and a half candles rather than five candles. We're looking for a waiver on light outport on Valley Street greater than two and a half foot candles. We're going to the further property line at two and a half candles. We need a waiver on traffic congestion control analysis. That's again another section of the, of the bylaw, the same waiver. We need a waiver on the 70-foot easement along Pine and Valley Streets. We need a waiver on the vintage road construction and we need a waiver on local walkway along Valley Street. Yet another place in your bylaw.
Really?
Yeah, it shows up three places.
We like sidewalks.
Yeah, we've captured most of those, but a couple of them, I'm not sure I see them in the PSC report. I could be wrong.
May not be.
In terms of the impact assessment and is that, is that in?
Traffic study's in here, but it's only listed once. I saw it.
Yeah, we have a couple, but he doesn't.
I was looking for that reference to the impact assessment. Is that in here?
At 54, no, it's traffic, it's circulate, yeah, there it is, traffic impact assessment. It's on the top of page 12 of the, of the BSC comments.
So is that a traffic impacted, how do you have it phrased there? The impact?
Traffic impact, analysis report and traffic congestion control and analysis.
Yeah.
It's all, it's all the same thing.
We're trying to see if we're on the same thing. I think we're, I think maybe we should wait. I mean, it's, the water is murky here enough where, I mean, I think we're generally aligned with the exception of potentially the sidewalk, and I think some of us are comfortable moving forward nonetheless, but there are a number of waivers and maybe it does make sense. I know Peter, I think he's advocating that we wait perhaps another week, maybe a week and a half before we can get back here. Michelle, your, next week is bad for you, the whole week.
Well, I'm just concerned that, you know, that we don't pull together the ZBA, DRB, the Bob Bullock, the Bob McGee, all in the next four days. No, three days, we're close riding. I think you'd be better served.
Right.
I don't know what their schedule is.
They have a draft decision made.
Right, Gino's had a draft decision once he gets the final input.
So let's see if we can get a date. What's the next date that at least the four of us can, can be here? That's the question.
Why did I come tonight? I forgot six.
All right, you guys.
We have a town meeting because the following, May 6th, 7th.
Tuesday's town meeting, so.
Could do it the night. It could go Tuesday, it could go Wednesday in an unusual event.
I don't know. What's the second date?
I mean, that's fine.
Goes Tuesday, Wednesday, and then it goes Tuesday, Wednesday. Never goes to Thursday.
So no matter what, Thursday's clear.
Right.
Thursday's on a normal night.
Right.
Thursday the ninth. What does that do as far as your, your plans?
Is it, will the decision, you have, how much time will you take after that for a written decision?
We'll have a draft decision that night that we will be reviewing. Got that, Gino?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine, that's no problem. If we do it then too, we can have the other, the special permit decisions also.
Right, just to wrap it up later.
Except for the sign.
Right, except for the sign.
Is that something you want to move forward on the, start that process sooner and then later as far as the sign? If we're delayed a couple of weeks here in terms of site plan?
We can do that subsequent, because again, we're, they're still talking to Tufts about how to do it and
Okay.
So we can do that three months down the line. We're not in a rush for that.
Okay. I mean, we've, we've had projects where we've been able to do this and capture it and move forward, but this one, there's a lot of waivers here.
No, and I appreciate that you guys are, look, spending all the backless to get this approved for it.
We're the SPGA for signs, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll come back to us anyway.
I think the ninth will work and I give a chance to get, wrap up all the items for it.
Yeah, it's not that easy sometimes to get, to get to see the superintendent and those folks, so you need a little advanced time to get it done.
I mean, I don't think your issue with the building is going to be, because the parking Tom and I'll handle the building inspector, the fire chief, and those kind of things.
You want to say 7:45, Betts, or? It work? Okay. So we'll, we'll pick this up at 7:45 on the
May 9th.
If you can read my writing, I bestow on you my conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
And you're comfortable working directly with PSC and with Gino?
Yeah, we'll get that sorted out, yeah.
I know you normally communicate with Tom Houston, but you know, Dave is in his stead here tonight.
Dave's a little tougher to deal with, but we'll get it done.
You guys know each other from Canton as well?
Yes.
All right, it's a great project, I mean, I think you're hearing broad support. We just had a couple loose ends.
I want to thank you all for your thoughtful comments and this just makes a better project with all the input. Thank you.
Thank you and thank the folks in the audience as well for their, their comments.
Oh, we're not done?
Has Michelle's reviewed the minutes?
Yeah. If there are
Do you have more?
Just the once and last time.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks. Dedham Street A and R.
Do you have the
Bouchers.
I tried to get it done, Andrea, but it was just, I think the, the hill was too steep, I think, to climb. Too many contingencies. Too many contingencies and things to work into.
I, I do honestly think that the decision will be better when you get, you get all the input of the different agencies.
Especially if you're going to look for some other site improvement in lieu of the sidewalk, Bob McGee's input will be huge on that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and we're talking, if, if it's going to be on the other side of the street, the person who owns the other side of the street was sitting here.
Right, and he was in favor of that, but we could get some other...
But does he know that he's going to have to put it in?
I wasn't sure if he realized that's what was going on.
Because he will have to put that in.
He realizes.
The stone wall.
Yeah, I think he understood that.
Because he, we just faced it on his other, other...
I think he understood that.
I honestly, um, I, no, 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 no. Oh, yeah. I didn't, I didn't think that the retaining wall in front of Leo's Landing was in lieu of a sidewalk. I thought that was not worth going into any long conversation on. That was his perception, I don't think that's what it is though. But that's neither here nor there. Let's get on here.
Okay.
I'm done.
A&R?
Yes, it's fine. The, it originally came in, it was a slightly different configuration and I had a couple of minor comments which were addressed. The configuration has changed very slightly. It's mostly conservation, under conservation restrictions, so it's not like...
Where's the property?
It's like, it's Norman Gray's property on Down Street in the corner. They're carving off a parcel. It looks like they're going to add it to his, the lot that his existing building is on. I don't know, it doesn't tell, say what it's for, but it doesn't have to say.
Can we swing that around here?
Who's this at, Gino?
Norman Gray. He's carving this piece off of this large lot and it's not a, it's all under conservation restriction except for an access easement through here. And originally...
Here's the red building, right here, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And all, all Palm Street.
Yep.
So there's a little, originally it just kind of ended here. Now there's a strip along the top of this and in a little corner of this lot is going to become part of the large lot. So there will be a connection physically, but it's, like I say, this is all under conservation easement.
What would be the value of having that separate, what was he, what is?
I, I don't know. I'm guessing that he's going to consolidate it with the other parcel because I, I don't know what else you can do with it.
Is it not buildable? Because it's conservation restriction, it's not buildable.
Exactly.
Just that part is CR'd, right?
And all the...
The shading, all the shading.
But this is tied into this, you said.
Yes, above this dock, the dock line.
Right.
This little strip right here is remaining with this lot.
Is that upland or wetland?
It's, it's right next to the river and it's part of the river, in fact. The wetland line is shown, it's a little, it's hard to read because it's very busy in that area. But it's actually, it's, it's wetland. That strip is entirely wetland.
It abuts his daughter's property there?
Yes.
Where's the daughter's property?
Right here. So maybe, maybe it's going, going to become part of her lot, I don't, oh no, because it's separated now.
Right. Well, I mean, it meets this A&R, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't have the required circle, but that's because it's conservation.
Right.
How do we, how do we, approval not required and it's not a building lot?
It's just carving off, it's just creating new lot lines, that's all it's doing.
But it's being added to a lot, it's not...
No, he's not adding to it.
No, it's four lines.
That's speculation.
It has four lines around it. It doesn't connect into any other lot, so...
Kind of strange. Just over an acre.
But that's how they normally do it. Sometimes, sometimes the surveyor will put a note that says parcel 1A to be, could become, you know, consolidated or conveyed to the abutting lot. There's no note that says that, that, so I'm just guessing that that's what he's going to do.
We, we just recently did an A&R down in Chatham and the Newtown Council, Jay Tullman, required us to put not a building lot on it.
That's happened done before.
And I probably would have suggested that if it weren't under conservation easement.
Which makes it not a building lot.
Right.
Yes.
And that's impotuity, perpetuity, excuse me.
It can be overturned by the legislature.
Right, but I mean, that's pretty common.
So, so Gino, you're saying that this is part of this parcel, the way, and what happens here?
Well, it turns the corner. It's, there's a little opening, there's a little opening right here.
Without the gate.
What is it, like five feet?
It's intentional.
On which side of the river? Is it, is it opening? Is it all on this side?
Probably in the river.
It is in the river, actually.
Is that at the Thalweg? You know where the Thalweg is? It's the center. That's the bottom, the lowest point in the, the Thalweg. I learned that from my first, my first home years ago.
It was in the river.
In the Thalweg.
I think of the flood zone, it was a distance to the Thalweg. Oh, I remember it well. Okay.
Yeah, and 364 square feet in the corner of his lot is also being part of this now. The original plan from a week earlier wasn't, that was not there and the strip was not here. So that was the change, but it meets all the requirements.
Okay, well, meets the requirements?
Make a motion, we accept A&R? Vote on it?
Second.
Whatever we do.
For what?
Yeah, there's not a number here. How do we reference this? Gino, how, how should we reference this?
Um, the plan creates a 48,938 square foot parcel out of an 11.37 acre parcel.
Yes.
Per such and such a plan, is that how?
I, I would just reference it as, in, in the motion you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, as the A&R plan submitted by Norman Gray for property on Dedham Street that creates a parcel, 48,938 square foot parcel.
That's what I said.
From what?
Yeah, that, that's what the motion was.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, here's the date. I would just suggest we reference the date as well. Per plan dated April 17th, 2013.
Is that part of your motion? The plan dated April 17th?
As amended.
Yes.
Excellent.
Second.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Do we have any minutes here?
I think she's going to ask for us to...
I forgot to include them.
Oh.
Didn't expect us to get to them.
They were in your packets last time and you didn't do anything with them because you're late.
Okay.
Too late.
Yeah, that was a late meeting, the last one. Okay, so Betsy has a schedule for town meeting? Okay, so we're posted for town meeting and then, and we just, we agreed to, was it May 9th? I think. Okay.
Yours is May 9th?
I'm May 7th.
My husband's May 8th.
That's it?
You just set up a meeting for your birthday?
No, your birthday.
Oh, yours is, okay, yours is the 8th.
No, mine's the 7th.
Yours is the 7th, this is the 8th, that's exciting. Wow, two Taurus's.
Oh, happy birthday.
How long have you been married?
Us too.
Yeah, no, but we haven't been married as long.
Are we done?
Okay, I think unless there's any, anything else, Andrea, as far as CPC, is there anything that you want to share here? I know you're a short timer here, so...
Only, it's not uncommon at any point in CPC. We are right now in the middle of possible land protection discussions. And when, when the board is in the middle of them, it's done under executive session, so, you know, normally it brings something to you, but not until it's ripe.
Okay. In terms of the public information, anything that you can't...
We just had the annual, we just had our annual work plan approved at the last meeting and as in the past, it's always picked up the goals of the master plan and then the implementation are just straight issues off of that that have come up before the boards, other things that you're familiar with.
And how about town meeting? Is there anything of relevance here?
There's a, besides the administrative stuff, there's a request by Olive Day School to rehabilitate and expand upon the existing playground, not in the back, but to the side. And so it would be replacing the existing equipment and putting down more topsoil and loam and seed for the area that's nothing but a dirt pile otherwise, so they're putting in better, putting in better seed. So it turns out to be a significant expense at, with contingency, $350,000. Money that, it's a significant piece of change. As it turns out though, it's, we only have, you know, three playgrounds in town besides Palm Street. So, you know, we've taken care of kids' place. This would be, this is the second large one. And what happened at Freeman School Playground kind of got absorbed into the school. So these are the active playgrounds in town. So we recommended it. We made sure they had, they covered it. They actually raised about, close to $100,000 or more in their own dollars and cents. So it's not an insignificant project and they came in with a very nice match.
That's great.
So because of the, the activity on CPC, if you are considering an associate member for the coming year, I would, you know, put my name in.
Okay. Okay, well, on behalf of the board, you know, thank you for, and the town, you know, thank you for your many years of service. What, what year did you start your, your public service with the town?
I've been an elected member for over 10 years. I've been an associate member and elected member for over 15. I've lived in town for 21 and I've been associated with the planning board for 20 because before I was an associate member, I wrote the open space plan. That was an attachment of the master plan. So the master plan was just getting written when I came into town, commented, had the silly comment of, there's no open space plan, and got put in charge of it, so...
Well, thank you.
So now it's Michelle's turn.
Yeah, she only has another 19 years to go.
My kids were your age when I started.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, folks.